Thank everyone for being here today. I want to thank everyone for being here today, Tuesday, September 5th, for our regularly scheduled 6:00 PM meeting. We want to start by going in prayer. Reverend Jason Davis, if you will, lead us in prayer.
Last prayer. Father God, we thank you for allowing us to come together this evening. God, we pray that you allow this meeting and everything take place with bringing glory. We thank you for all the city officials. We thank you for this great city of Biloxi. We thank you for all the activities taking place. Continue to keep us safe where we can continue to bring glory to you as we serve others. We ask all this in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I have a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
I have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Let's hear it. Presentation, agenda, mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. It's a, we got some champions in the house, and I think we had two-time champions, eight-years-old and now nine-year-olds. So how about that Biloxi? All right. Jeff, will you come up here? We got some certificates to acknowledge that great championship team that you had. It was not eight-year-old last year, now it's this year, it's nine-year-old. Okay. All right, but you want to say something?
Yes, sir. Uh, let me call the coaches up here. Pat Lyons, Brett Bogard, John Kirk. Now, the players, Brett Bogard, Brett and Bogard.
We can do a photo op, so we're gonna look this way on TV.
Kayden Nichols. I'm sorry. Jacob McIntyre. Mr. Madden, you down? Shake your hand, Jake. Let's see here. Oh, see in there?
It is 2-1.
No, right there. Kayden Nichols. All right. Bryce Dacus. Luke Lyons. John Haley Kirk IV. Lucas Torres. Bakri Broussard. Miles D'Angelo. Nolan Gess. Gage Lechner. And Jacob Barnes, he wasn't able to make it tonight.
Parents want to take one, and we'll go for the big one.
But I just want to say a little bit about these guys real quick. Last year, A U, pretty much the same group of guys, swept district four games, then went on to state in Ocean Springs and battled against Ocean Springs and won state championship, then went to regionals. This year, we came runner-up in Long Beach in district and went into, played state championship in Van Cleve and swept that tournament, outscored the opponents 50 to 2. Then went on to play the regionals and come in third place in the regionals. I'm very proud of these boys. Happy and fortunate to be coaching them. Thank y'all. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, we're excited about a new field y'all are gonna put in progress here soon. Can't wait to play on it next season. Thank you.
Thank you. Proud of you. All right, thank you. Keep giving that last, give him that, give him that last certificate.
Yes, yes. Jacob's certificate, I'm sorry. Before I forget, I'd like to ask you to spread the expenses of the Biloxi travel expense card for minutes. And we might as well wait just a minute.
Yeah, we'll wait a second.
Can you hear me now? Okay, while they're exiting, we'll welcome everyone to our September meeting. And, uh, I think we got some items to, uh, to look at tonight, and, uh, we'll address them one by one. So that concludes my report.
All right, Mr. Lawrence, council reports.
Well, yeah. I'd like to welcome all the citizens who live around Acacia. They're all here. I hope y'all have a great time in City of Biloxi. We don't want to be like the planning commission. We welcome you here. Y'all will come up, stand up and speak, speak y'all's pieces. That's what we're supposed to do, sit here and listen. So, uh, we're a little bit different than the planning commission. Glad to have y'all here. Great, hey, the baseball team, you can't beat that. You got a champion from the City of Biloxi, that was a good thing. Back-to-back, hey, we maybe watch them go all the way. Ten-year-old, eleven, twelve, that's pretty good. They didn't win anything back-to-back, that's a good thing. That's it.
That's it. All right, Mr. Guines.
Yes, I just want to ask Ms. Christie about the Main Street Road Cross.
Is it on yet? Okay. Um, they, as you know, we just have the striping left to do. We were told last week that they're supposed to start, um, end of this week or beginning of next week, so I will stay on them. I know they were out there yesterday, I mean, today doing some cleanup, so hopefully they're getting ready to lay some striping and then we'll be done.
At the end of the week or beginning of next week? What is the timeframe?
Yes, sir, either the end of this week or beginning of next week.
Okay.
That concludes my report. That's it. Ms. Newman? Mr. Deming?
I'm sorry, Ms. Labata. Exercise back and forth tonight.
I need the steps.
I noticed on Paul David at the corners of Caroline Drive that there was some work done.
Yes.
They removed the speed bump, and there's just some, it looks like some asphalt was laid in those areas that were recessed.
Yes.
Do we, do we ever scope that? Do we know what caused that? Is this just a, is this just a short-term patch that we just did?
We videoed the pipe that goes under there. We didn't see anything from the pipe video, so I don't know if it's just a section of bad base, so we just put some more asphalt in it. We'll just have to wait and see. We didn't see any pipe failure, so it might just be a sinkhole just formed there.
Okay, well, sure, the residents will continue to keep an eye on that.
Yes.
Oh, do we have an update regarding paving? I know we had paving, we had contracts, contractors backed out, things like that. Where are we at on all the paving projects that were supposed to occur months ago?
There will be a ward of a new paving contract on the next council agenda.
Okay, great.
Councilman, I can probably, she provided me a schedule on what we were attacking as far as a timeline and sequence, and I can happily give that to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that.
That's it, my dear.
That's all I have, Nathan. Mr. President, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, yeah, just a reminder that I have, the next Ward 5 meeting will be Wednesday, September 13th. It's Wednesday of next week at 6 o'clock at the Snyder Center on Pass Road. That's, that's always open to the public. The historic Oak on Edgewater Drive, maybe a year, year and a half, we had, we paid for lighting and the tree was lit. Probably maybe four, five, six days, maybe a week, and then it wasn't lit. And could somebody check on that? We paid for the work, and, uh, it's a beautiful historic oak tree. It's gotta be a couple hundred years old. So anyway, I think some of that lighting was upgraded. We just need to have somebody check on it. If the work is incomplete, it needs to be completed. The, uh, next thing, the White House Fountain there on Highway 90, it's empty. Do we, we still maintain that, right?
Yeah, we're in the process of entering into a adopt-a median agreement. There's some work being done there, and the White House Hotel will be incorporating that as part of their landscaping and do landscaping around the fountain.
Okay.
I think we're actually working on the irrigation part of the deal, so move it forward.
So. Okay, thank you. And, uh, Ms. Labata? You look like you need six more steps. Water fountain coming to Penzoil, I know it's in.
It's here. The contractor, I was supposed to pick it up. I did not check and see if he did, but it's in his possession or will be shortly, and,
Just let me know the timeline on that, if you would, the next couple of days.
He's working on finishing up a few other little projects, and then he's gonna move to that one. It is next on his list.
I want to be the first person to get a sip of water from that water fountain.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Also, any, any word, when I heard paving contracts, Spratley Drive, that's Spratley Avenue?
I have not gotten an update from our contractor on that. He was waiting for the county, because the county wanted it milled a very specific way, so I asked him to coordinate directly with the county. So I've not heard an update from him in the last, I don't know, two weeks or so. I'll get an update.
When you hear the timeline, if you'd pass it on to me. The other thing is, Bay Vista Drive, the manhole, that manhole was replaced. Is, is there another manhole there? Or no, there won't be a manhole.
So there is another manhole.
There is, okay. It's just covered under rock and dirt and everything. So maybe when Spratley's paved, we get a twofer?
Uh, we could try, but the county's doing that paving on Spratley, so I'm not sure. I can't commit to that, but, um, hopefully.
Okay.
Our repair replace contractor is supposed to handle that paving, so hopefully he will not have as big an issue as we.
That's right, it's a different, okay, different contract.
Right.
Okay, um, thank you.
Welcome.
Will, will we get a Capitals project list for fiscal year '24? Typically, we've gotten one, not capital equipment, but whatever projects are still in the works and any, any projected capital projects for fiscal year '24.
The sourcing for those.
And the sourcing, yeah. So if we can get that in the next week sometime, if it's ready to go, I'd appreciate it. That concludes my comments. Thank you. All right, thank you. Mr. Glavine?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, want to talk about A.J. Holloway Sportsplex. It's great to see these kids, and I heard the coach mention they can't wait to play on those new fields. I see that they're starting to mark, uh, some of the fields and some of the areas, so it looks like they're about to begin that project. Am I correct in seeing that work out there? So that, that's really awesome to see. On the tennis courts, uh, they made some adjustments to some of the lights, Mike, but it didn't make a difference. They were hoping that angle of the lights on the tennis courts would make a difference. Are we still kind of considering working with the school, Biloxi School, and going in partners, maybe upgrading those lights or replacing those lights at the tennis courts?
We haven't asked him yet, but we will.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. On Hinge In Place, I got a disturbing video today from one of the residents, and he shows his mailbox being mowed down. Chief, you probably had a report on, on that over the last couple of days. And so that's reviving efforts again. They're concerned that could have been their kid, or it could have been a resident walking on that sidewalk. The car must be going at least 50 miles an hour, it appears. So perhaps we can have the traffic committee, I talked to a couple of the residents, I know we'd have to get a consensus on the neighborhood, but that little shortcut is Terrace, I think. The name of the road is Terrace Court. They're now thinking if we put a couple of the speed bumps like we have down in Pops Ferry Landing around the curve, maybe that would be a deterrent, because if somebody hits that going 50 miles an hour, um, they're gonna know it. So perhaps we can take a look at that. I know when we had the big meetings, Mayor, if you recall, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, we talked about an activated gate, and we ran into some issues with that. It seems like the homeowner association is willing to foot the majority of the bill to put such a system in if that is something we want to pursue again. And, you know, maybe we, we kind of discuss that at some later date, but there's a lot of sensitivity right now because of the incident that occurred. All right, Kimbo, Kimbro, I noticed that it's, uh, the drainage project director is on the list. There's, uh, emergency repairs because of the flooding into one of the homes, and I noticed it, it popped up on the list.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Yeah, if you don't mind saying a couple of words on it?
Uh, yeah, so we've gotten, we're getting out there to see what we can do to get that, get that resolved for them, since it's flooding her house there on the corner.
Okay.
Yeah.
I noticed it was on the list, so I thank you for getting it on the list, and, and just, you know, if you can provide updates as we make headway, I appreciate that. Couple of people that we lost this week, and I just want to reference a couple of them. One of them is a coast icon, Jimmy Buffett, and he passed away a couple of days ago. So I just wanted to note that in our council report. And then somebody that, that has made a big impact on a lot of people on the coast is a professor up at Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College is Dr. Charles Sullivan. And, uh, Mayor, I just share this with you. I was in his class going back in 80, I don't know, 82, 83, and he walked into the class and he was talking about World War I, and he pointed at me and he said, "Your relatives did that," and it, you know, woke me up and everything, but he had a way of engaging people and keeping them interested in, in his class, but he was referring to the Black Hand, which was a Serbian military group at that time, part of Yugoslavia, and he knew about Yugoslavian roots, and he just decided to wake me up with that comment. But if, if we could recognize him in our closing of this meeting today, I would appreciate that from everyone. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And the only thing I have, you have a proclamation? Okay, go ahead.
We, you know, this is childhood, gang up on cancer, childhood cancer, so come on up, and we're gonna read this to you. We did light the lighthouse up in gold this, this week, so, uh, September is designated as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas more than 15,000 children under the age of 19 will be diagnosed with cancer in the United States in 2023, including more than 120 in Mississippi. Cancer is the leading cause of death by disease among children in the United States. Nearly 500,000 survivors of childhood cancer are alive in the United States today. By age 50, more than 99% of the childhood cancer survivors have been a chronic, have had a chronic health problem, and 96% have experienced a severe life-threatening condition caused by toxicity of the treatment, and that initially, that initially saved their life. Childhood cancer is the least, is the least funded cancer by the government and is up to the nonprofit organizations like St. Baldrick's Foundation to raise much-needed funds. Therefore, I, Andrew Fofo Gilich, Mayor of Biloxi, Mississippi, do hereby proclaim September, as September 2023 is National Childhood Awareness Month. So I'll present this proclamation to you. You want to offer your words?
Yeah. Well, this is awesome. So this is actually the third city today to make a proclamation that September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. So this is first time, and three cities in one day. So that is great. Yes, thank you guys so much. I am a cancer survivor myself. I had leukemia when I was 12 years old, so this means the world to me, and I will continue to fight for the kids here on the coast and everywhere. Thank you all so much, and be sure to drive by the lighthouse at night, it's pretty cool. Thank you.
That concludes my report again.
Yeah. Mike, the only thing I have is that list that I gave you of, he's not listening, but it's okay. I'll just, the list that I gave you, I have a few things I want to add to that, but other than that, that's all I have for my report, so.
That list has been turned into service requests, and they're on record. I think they're already working some of that stuff.
Good deal. Awesome. Thank y'all. All right, that's all I have, and that will move to citizens' comments. We have a total allotted time of 45 minutes. Each person that speaks will get a total of three minutes. When the bell rings, your time is up. When you come forward, please state your name and address and sign in on the form at the table as well. We'll start on my left, your right, anyone on my left wants to speak? My left, your right, anyone going once? All right, come forward.
Do I write my name first?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, um, so I wanted to let you guys know a little bit about myself and why I'm here today. My name is Ramiro Rodriguez. I first came across Biloxi five years ago while I was working in Harrisburg, Mississippi. My wife and three kids fell in love with the area, and we decided to purchase a lot back then here in Biloxi. We recently be finished our beach home, which took roughly about two years, but we weren't able to move because my work duties have extended for another couple of years. Respectfully, I would like to request permission to do short-term rental in our Biloxi beach house. Our property zoning is RM30, high-density multifamily residential, which qualifies to apply for a conditional use. Our intentions are not to impact the community in any negative way, but on the other hand, give other families the opportunity to discover and experience our beautiful city and its surroundings. I do want to point out, long-term lease is not an option for us, as we would still like to visit our home whenever our kids are out of school. We recently presented our case to the City of Biloxi Planning Committee and received a recommendation for approval. I would like to emphasize, we would manage the property ourselves with very strict rules to avoid any type of unwanted disturbance with specific age requirements and no events whatsoever. We have a security monitoring system throughout the property and direct connection with all our next-door neighbors. I let my next-door neighbors know of my near-term intentions, and out of three of the next-door neighbors we have, I have received approval from two of them. In full transparency, we did not build this home to be an investment for short-term rentals. We built this home from the ground up to be a retirement home. So it is in our best interest to only allow responsible parties to stay so our home does not get damaged in any way, shape, or form. I do want to add, me and my family are fully invested in Biloxi and surrounding areas, and we intend to retire here. We have roughly 30,000 square feet of commercial properties, which we rent to lawyers, doctors, Memorial Hospital, and other regional and local businesses. Although we will manage the property remotely, we count with local employees in our payroll that would be available for any unforeseen circumstances. We are fully committed to meet all city regulations while also making sure that our neighborhood maintains its peaceful atmosphere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on my left and your right? Mr. Kavanaugh?
Uh, Michael Kavanaugh, 25, 26 South Shore Drive, and I represent Mr. Rodriguez in his item, agenda item 4E that he was just speaking in reference to, by the way, and I'm here to support that. And I want to point out that this is unique in respect to a short-term rental. This is not a commercial operation. As Mr. Rodriguez told you, this is intended to be his home, and when he is in town, he travels here on a very frequent basis, and when he's here, this is where he stays. But it's a big house, and it's an expensive house, and when his family, his children are out of school, they come stay here for extended periods of time as well. But a short-term rental is, is an opportunity to make some income to help defer the expenses of the property, and that's what he wants to do. At the planning commission, the planning commission found that he met all nine of the criteria contained in the land development ordinance. This property is on the corner of Acacia and Highway 90. It is not in the middle of the block, it's at the very southern end on the eastern side, and it's nothing between this house and the beach but a vacant lot. The nearest house to him that does face the beach is actually a short-term rental also. Parking is not an issue. It's he, you can park at least five cars, if not seven cars, underneath the property and in his driveway, so off-street parking is not going to be allowed. You're not going to be able to rent it unless you're a minimum of 30, 30 years of age, and you're not allowed to have events of any type, whether it be big parties or weddings, receptions, or anything like that. At the planning commission hearing, no one, and this is an important point, because this is what the legal standard is, no one put forth any evidence at the planning commission hearing that would be evidence against him having met the standards to be approved for a short-term rental. Like I said, this, and he said, this is his home, this is not a business venture. He works for an entity that does large real estate and, and real estate investment, and he has many properties up and down the coast that are commercial ventures, but this isn't it. This is his home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left?
Good evening. My name's James Coleman. I live at 6252 Emerald Lake Drive in, in your ward.
Yes, sir.
The reason I'm here is, uh, my wife is taking up a passion. She's been helping out with her church at Feed My Sheep, and we've discovered there's a great amount of homeless that hangs around Back Bay Mission. And, um, just by watching the news last few months, I noticed that there was some discussion on having a soup kitchen on Judge Seacool, and it got denied. And I just wanted to raise awareness, because this, we started from the ground up. She pays out of her pocket to feed them every Sunday, and, uh, just wanting to raise awareness. They, uh, they deserve better. We got to show by example, and, um, I just think that if everyone worked together, we could find a, a better viable option, maybe temporary or not, but I just feel that they're being marginalized, and, um, I mean, I just always try to put myself in their shoes. They have their own stories. They, they've dealt through deaths, family, they don't have any family. So I would just pray that y'all consider to put yourselves in their shoes also.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left and your right? My left, your right? All right, we'll move to the other side of the room. Anyone on my right and your left? Please come forward, state your name and address, and sign in, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Bob Hudson, 119 Jefferson Davis, Mr. Lawrence's district. I'm a homeowner in Biloxi, right next door to the subject house at 116 Acacia. Before I state my objection to short-term rental, I'm actually in support of STRs along the highway and along the beach, because these homes are generally on larger lots. They do not deprive the folks here of their right of quiet enjoyment of their homes. The city has successfully commercialized casinos, hotels, restaurants, condos, beachfront STRs, amusement parks, more, all along this coastline. While commercialization is important in any thriving city, do we also need to commercialize our inner neighborhoods? Because that's what you're starting to do with this. You're opening up Pandora's Box. I ask you, when it will be enough? We all live, work, and vote here, and we support the city, but we cannot support a city that does not respect the rights of people that live here, as well as those trying to capitalize on this market. There needs to be a balance that's fair for all. This house is on a very small postage-stamped lot, .2 acres. Martha, if you could hand this to the group? These homes are on top of each other, but the folks that live here respect each other and strive hard to build a sense of community like no place I've ever lived before, and that's, I've lived all over the country. Does the city want to ruin that by turning our neighborhood into a business district? If so, folks that have invested here, have lived here for many years, will start to leave. STRs almost always split the high nightly rates between multiple families into one dwelling, and on top of that, they bring company in for events. I understand he's not bringing in for events, but how is he gonna manage that? They can't afford it otherwise. The house in front of us is on a big one-third acre lot with parking for eight cars, but still, they often park on the street. Here it is just the other day, lined up, not only on our street, Acacia as well, for one house. The streets will live here and not have not seen refurbishment in decades. Does this look like a business street to you? The street hasn't seen any repairs in decades. They're in horrible shape. The planning commission decides to add more parking and traffic to these roads to accommodate more business for short-term rentals in the streets of our neighborhood? It's gonna get worse. The city needs to draw a line at beachfront properties and start paying more attention to folks living, voting, and paying taxes here like me and my, and my family. Now, now, any of you council members imagine having a tourist rental with business, lots of traffic, parking, and people eight feet directly in front of your home while you and your kids are trying to get to sleep for work the next morning? Is that where you would want to live? I doubt it. The STR is also across from Miramar Park, where cars must park on the street as well. Two-sided parking is gonna be a disaster on Acacia. The small house has limited parking, and surely the STR tenants and their company will have to park on the street as well. Happens every time. This is going to present a safety issue at Highway 90 entrance to Acacia and for the folks living here. The added traffic will put children in the parked vehicles at further risk due to the added traffic being close to 90 at the intersection of the park. Can't we simply keep business out of our inner neighborhoods, keep it on the highway? Lastly, we live here and we vote-
Sir, your time is up. You can, you can have someone else finish for you if you-
Hi, I'm Colette Hudson. I live at 119 Jefferson Davis. And that was my husband, Bob, and I'll finish his last part, and then I have something I'd like to add, please. Um, lastly, we live here and we vote here. Most of the owners, like the owner of this home, live out of state. They don't vote here either. There is plenty of room and land along Highway 90 to commercialize. We don't need to expand commercialism into our neighborhoods. Please, I ask the city to respect the homeowner's right to quiet enjoyment. Otherwise, folks like me and my great, other great neighbors here in this room will find other places to live, pay taxes, and vote. Thank you. And then, what I'd like to add. We bought our home on 119 Jefferson about two and a half years ago, initially as a second home, but after meeting the neighbors and loving the neighborhood, we moved here full-time. The house in question, 116 Acacia, is immediately next door to us. It is situated on a tiny lot backed up just feet away from the house behind it and with two large lots in front of it that are zoned RM30. So he's not directly on Beach Boulevard. He has two large lots in front of him. The house directly in front of us is on Beach Boulevard and is currently a short-term rental business. It is a large lot, however, as ours is, so there's a decent distance and an oak tree. This is not the case with 116 Acacia. There is a real estate property, oh, two and a half years ago, sorry, very nervous. Hardly any short-term rentals were permitted, and now there is no end in sight. We will be surrounded. We live here, work here, pay taxes, and vote here. We are asked to live with constant strangers all around us. That hardly seems fair and not why we fell in love with the area. We want to retire here. This is a real estate, there is a real estate property law that states we have a right to quiet enjoyment. Another issue is parking. That house does not provide much room for vehicles. That puts the cars then on the street. The streets here are already in terrible condition. Miramar Playground is across the street from this house, and patrons visiting the park already use the street, making the traffic coming off Beach Boulevard even more dangerous. And about this children's park, how are the renters vetted? What if the renters are pedophiles? Who monitors this? Who protects the children? We didn't move here to police short-term renters on the weekend. When will it end? When the majority of our neighborhoods are transients? Again, we live here full-time and vote here. We have a right to quiet enjoyment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on my right? Mr. Berger? Please state your name and address and sign in, please.
Good evening. Thank you. Don't start the clock yet. Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, I oppose, um, this idea at 116 Acacia. I'd addressed it a little better for you this afternoon, but guess what? I dropped my son off at Sunkist so he could play golf. And so I was leaving Sunkist, and I was thinking about Sunkist and Ancient Oaks and Ben Oaks and River Place and the Enclave and all these places. You would never, in a million years, give a place like that conditional use. You just wouldn't. And so what they're asking for at 116 Acacia Avenue is to carve out a piece of real estate so that they can have a short-term rental. Some people are, I suspect, gonna hang their hat on the court decision that impacted a piece of property at the corner of St. George and Avalon. And I would remind you that, first of all, that's under appeal. It's really unprecedented. Judge Smith is certainly very capable, but I read his opinion, and I don't think Judge Smith was saying yea or nay that he thought that was a good place for a short-term rental. He just simply said, well, the council didn't give a reason. We have laws, we have rules, we have regulations, we have zoning, and we should stick with it. I hear people talk about property rights. Well, what about my property rights? Just because I don't live in a subdivision with covenants and I don't have a POA, I still have property rights. Place like Ben Oaks, there's no way this flies, and many of the other places that I named, for a lot of reasons that have been stated. I, I am very much against this because it's just gonna, once again, continue to try to open a can of worms to have short-term rentals and other such endeavors encroach on our neighborhoods. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Please state your name and sign in.
Uh, my name is Matt Ward. I live at 166 Jefferson Davis Avenue. Again, I'm a neighbor with Bob and Colette. I show up every time where there's one of these meetings, and, uh, they're considering short-term rental. Uh, as you may possibly remember my story, I moved here from Tuscaloosa, Alabama. I bought, I have two homes on my lot. I was gonna make them both short-term rental. That was my plan, too. Moved here, found the neighborhood to be super, uh, great people, so I moved here. I'm now a permanent resident, uh, here in Biloxi. Been here, probably getting close to three years. And, um, one thing that, again, all of us on our street, we talk, we communicate, you know, if I have a guest, again, I have two homes on mine, so I do a free, uh, VRBO. My friends and my, uh, family come and stay in my second house on pretty regular. Uh, I take pictures and I send to all my neighbors, go, look, this is my brother and, you know, whomever, and they're gonna be staying at my house this week. So if you see them walking up and down the street, they're part, you know, they're family. Uh, we show that back and forth as other people have guests. I have guests coming in this weekend, they're gonna be walking up and down the street. That way you can identify, know friend or foe. Uh, back, I don't know, I guess it was two months ago, we had two cars fly up our street, park, uh, I think there were seven men hop out of the cars and start running up and down our street for about 14 minutes. Only know that because I think the police showed up at 15 minutes, uh, checking all the doors, stealing stuff out of the cars, hopped back in the cars and left. Again, one of the neighbors happened to be standing outside smoking a cigar. He knew that wasn't anybody on our street, so he was able to call the police. Um, it's just all part of, again, what they continue to say is, open Pandora's Box. As we continue to approve something other than what's already been approved of, we're okay having a short-term rental on 90. It's just as it continues to encroach into our neighborhood, it may actually run some of the neighbors off, which goes, you know, I can't deal with it, uh, and the neighborhood starts to change. We currently have something great, and I'm just here to remind you how great it is. Uh, also, again, I also understand most of my neighbors have sent, uh, emails today uh, saying that they oppose it as well. Thank you. Appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Please come forward. State your name and address and sign in.
Hi, I'm Gabrielle Berger. I apologize, I wasn't gonna speak, but, um, I have grave concerns about this. We've got young children. As many of you know, we just moved here permanently, and I had made that decision because we have a great neighborhood. We have what I felt was somewhat insulated from bringing in a whole bunch of potential issues, and as we're hearing more and more that folks are being allowed to bring a whole bunch of strangers into their homes and to rent them out, this causes me great heartburn. And I have great concerns because we get people all the time racing down our street on Miramar, 175 Miramar, and, um, it's becoming unsafe. It's unsafe for us to even ride our bikes across the street because people are just driving down the street quickly. To go up to Miramar Park, once again, we've got lots of traffic coming in, so it's only gonna get worse. So I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Beverly Hammond, and I live at 148 Acacia Avenue. And I must say, here I am again, trying to explain to this council why I do not want at 116 Acacia or any other properties from Iberville to White Avenue zoned or used as Airbnbs or short-term rental unless it has a beach address. In 1962, my husband and I decided Acacia Avenue was the perfect place to raise a family. Why? Because it was a lovely neighborhood, friendly people, three schools within walking distance of our home, elementary school, junior high, and high school. In the summer, Biloxi Parks Department had a supervisor at the park where the children could go play from 9 to 1 to 12 and 1 to 3. It was, that was awesome. Our children still talk about the fun times they had there to this day. Within a few years, Biloxi began to expand to the north, and all the yuppies decided that the place to buy was across the bay. This opened up our area as a moderate-priced housing area, just what newlyweds, first-time home buyers were looking for. Jobs were beginning to come more plentiful downtown, which was close to their home. If you did not have a car, they had public transportation was available, or possibly you could even walk to work. That was working out real well until about five years or so ago, when out-of-state people and investors saw an opportunity to make a fast buck. They began buying up all of these little affordable homes to use for Airbnbs or short-term rentals. Now, these homes are not available to buy for newlyweds or people wanting to have their first home. The, because these houses are being used for short-term rentals, it makes it less available than for renters. So when they want to, um, rent, the rent is so high, they can't afford it. So what do they do? They have to find someplace to live. So then they start going for government housing or low income. And when they go there to look for a place to live, the, the line, the, the list is long, very long, and so there's not a chance to get in there. If they're fortunate enough to have a car, they can maybe live in a car. We want our neighborhood back. Is that my time up?
Yes, ma'am. Time is up. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. I need to talk about the traffic on Acacia.
If you want to let someone finish for you, you can.
You wanna finish?
I'll finish.
Okay, I don't think you can read it. Right, it says, "on the traffic." Just wanna hear my experience. Okay, I'm gonna read it.
Please state your name and address and sign in, please.
I wasn't gonna talk today. My name is Martha Tripp, and I live at 132 Jefferson Davis Avenue, and I'm part of the neighborhood that is concerned about 116 Acacia. I'm happy to have you as a neighbor, greet you, but we do not want short-term rentals. We are over, we're packed with them right now, but Beverly here says that Saturday she was turned off of Irish Hill to go to, to her home, and there were a party going on in the street, and the street was pretty packed with cars, and so she couldn't get down that there. So what she's concerned about is when we do have these short-term rentals, especially close to the park, because the park has the opportunity to park on both sides. That's where they park. When they get the kids out, they all park on, so having this, um, short-term rental would interfere with some of that parking. I'm happy to have short-term rental on the beach. I am not against it. I understand it's a good thing for our city. I want our city to make money. But y'all, I've lived in this neighborhood for 72 years, on the same street. It's not because I didn't want to move, it's because that's kind of what my life has been like, and, um, I just want to preserve the neighborhood. Um, I'm happy you're listening to us today, and I appreciate all that you do for our city, because you are hard workers for our city, and I do appreciate it. So just in comment, think about where we are and where we live and what we're trying to do. And it's a great little neighborhood because it's close to the beach. That's why they're all trying to get there. I get that. But still, we want to keep it as our neighborhood. I thank you so very much.
Thank you. So, anyone else on my right, your left? Anyone on my right, your left? All right, go to the back of the room. Please come forward, state your name and address and sign in, please. Please come forward, state your name and address and sign in, please.
Hi, I am Teresa Thompson. I live at 1506 Avalon in Biloxi. And, well, I guess I'm like Ms. Kim. We're all back again with the same issue, short-term rentals. Since we started this, we now have about four hundred short-term rental locations and approximately twelve to fifteen hundred additional hotel rooms that we started this for. When is enough enough? With short-term, you may be gaining visitors, but you're either displacing or losing citizens. If you keep attacking the long-term neighborhoods with short-term rentals, you will possibly start losing the long-term citizens, or more so, the newer ones who recently made a choice to move here because of the safe, peaceful, family-oriented neighborhood. There are many zones in the, that are in the books where short-term rental is permitted, and I mean, y'all know them, CB, DT, WF, and RB, regional business waterfront. The city has all types of projects working in these zones. They're permitted, it's permitted there. There's no argument, there's no conditional use, you don't have to talk about it anymore. So why not concentrate on these zones and leave the well-established neighborhoods alone? Well, one thing, we're getting at almost a level where you're gonna saturate the market anyway, and if you're still working on these other areas, you might as well want to take a look at how much can you afford to have. You can't have unlimited short-term rentals. Sooner or later, it'll be too saturated for people to want to stay. Are they gonna lose? Are they gonna leave? The investors will walk out in a minute. So why not concentrate on those zones, leave the city, the neighborhoods alone? This could save the city and us, the citizens, from the stress and strain of constantly happening to come back to you to fight these projects. At the planning commission, over forty percent of the planning commissioners voiced their concern for approving this particular location, but they had already done outhouses in these circumstances already, and it was not the right thing to do for the neighborhood. A request to deny this short-term rental was made. Of course, it was not enough to stop the rest of the planning commission going on with the vote to approve. Power of I and the other neighbors that were present were so appreciative of these planning commission members that were so willing to stop this short-term rental by voicing their concerns and their support for the citizens of this neighborhood. Requirements for approval for conditional use is that the property must meet all nine conditional use requirements as listed in Biloxi ordinance. And it specifies all, not seven out of eight, or nine, or eight and three-quarters. It says all. You have to have non-conditional uses.
Time is up.
Okay.
Is there anyone else?
Give you the conditional uses so you could look at them yourselves based on what you heard in these meeting today.
Is there anyone else in the room that hasn't spoken that would like to speak? All right, if not, citizens' comments are closed, and we will move to the policy agenda. Ordinance A.
Ordinance for a zoning map amendment for the establishment of a planned development commercial master plan for residential development to be known as the current located at 2068 Beach Boulevard.
Second.
Okay, we have a first by Ms. Newman, a second by Mr. Glavine. Ordinance B.
Ordinance to amend the land development ordinance related to social services, soup kitchens, and multifamily dwellings.
Gary, who's the, this is the second reading, who moved this?
Tisdale and Glavine.
Tisdale and?
Glavine.
Glavine. Councilman Tisdale, Mr. Nathan is called to leave the meeting, so I'll be stepping in as vice president. I'm gonna open the floor to your discussion first.
Thank you. I have really no comments. I favor this ordinance, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Councilman Glavine, your second up.
Yeah, when we, when we took this up, we were also discussing micro, or whatever they call them, little homes, or whatever. Is that in this description as well, or not?
Well, essentially, three different items, although they're included in here together. We do not have a definition for soup kitchen or social services in there, so we're adding one. You know, you can't, you can't zone those type of uses out, you just have to have a definition and decide where the most appropriate place is for them, and we put the table in there. But to answer your question, Councilman Glavine, what happened is, is that our current definition of multifamily is defined as a single building having multiple units in it. What we're running into now is that we're beginning, because of the need of rental property, what we're getting now is a owner of a piece, a large piece of property that is putting multi-individual units on that property, not subdividing it. But like the tiny home community on Pops Ferry Road, and the community that y'all just approved in front of the Oak Shores condominiums down on the beach, and also one other that's coming forward, this creates a new element in the definition of multifamily. So that's what we're trying to address, or there's one big unit, one big piece of property where there are multiple individual units on that property for rental.
Okay, I have no other comment.
I'm gonna, Mr. Lawrence, I'll come back to you, Mr. Tisdale.
Not a problem. What side are these tiny homes you talking about? Is it one bedroom, one bathroom, what is it? I don't need any colleges all over town. I mean, that's what we doing.
Well, there's only, there's only one of these that would be considered a tiny home community, and that's the one up on Pops Ferry Road. The one that's being built at the, in front of the Oak Shores on Highway ninety is actually a single-family subdivision. Some of those houses that are gonna be built are two-
We're not talking about that, Jerry, we're talking about tiny homes. You said it's only one piece of property right now, and it's the same thing with short-term rental. There's only one piece of property right now. What's the next step? We don't need a bunch of tiny home, where somebody lives in that one room. I thought we do one in Biloxi. I didn't know where that come from, tiny home. Who put it up here?
Well, tiny homes is a new trend that's, that's going around now, where, where people are actually building homes and putting them on a trailer where they can move them from place to place. But, you know, as long as the square footage under our ordinance is over two-hundred-and-ninety square feet, then it's considered a, not considered a tiny home. So this tiny home, I don't even know how that got introduced into the conversation here, because what we're talking about is the multifamily definition in here that would cover any individual piece of property where you have several single-family houses on it for rent.
Y'all was talking about putting them on trailers. What is that supposed to be?
These would not be. That's not what we're talking about here. That's handled a different way, but these are-
You just said that, though, Jerry. Some of them's on trailers.
I said there are, that's what a tiny home is, is a home that is mounted on a trailer that people use to move from place to place. But in this case, these are smaller homes, but they're mounted on a permanent foundation.
So we talking about Katrina colleges on Seaman? That's what we dealing with now?
Well, these are, these can be smaller homes, but they're not, they're not what you could qualify as tiny homes under the definition of a tiny home.
And the soup kitchen, where you allowing these soup kitchens?
What we proposed is that they would be allowed in, as conditional use in CB, RB, and allowed as a use by right in industrial zoning. We removed it from the neighborhood zoning, which was the Judge Sekul area that came before you before and got denied. We're not proposing that. And of course, with these recommendations that we put in here for the zoning, again, if the council feels like CB is not appropriate, you can have that removed and then, you know, pass the ordinance so that there are places that would allow it.
What other one you figure is not compatible with the neighborhood? You said like CB would be another one.
Well, I raise that point so that if you don't think, if the council doesn't think that it's appropriate in CB, you can remove it. RB is the most intensive zoning that we have short of waterfront, and industrial, of course, is the most intensive that we have, which, you know, would pretty much allow anything in the way of junkyards or scrap yards or anything like that.
I have a problem with the little homes on trail, I have a problem with soup kitchen. I don't know what they want, we have another fight again to protect somebody's area. So I don't know exactly where you supposed to put it at. I don't know if we need to do something else and look at this a little bit more, but right now, we just, just saying we're gonna do this, put tiny house on a trailer, whatever. I don't know where we going with this thing. Don't make sense to me.
That's why we removed the soup kitchens and the social services from NB zoning, which is the zoning that's most commonly next to a neighborhood.
So we had, we had no listing originally for soup kitchen?
It would not be, it would, no, we didn't have any definition in there for soup kitchen or social services. And so what we're doing is putting in, the definitions that we're using are the definitions that come right out of the American Planning Association dictionary for soup kitchens and social services. So it's the commonly accepted, the generally accepted definition across the country.
And these soup kitchen, you said are not considered a restaurant, but yet they serve food. So who controls them?
That's correct. That's in the definition that it's not considered a restaurant, because they're not, they're either charging, they're not designed to make a profit, a soup kitchen. They can serve the meals for free, or they can serve them for a very low price, but they're not designed or orchestrated to be a profit-making entity, and that's in the definition.
Well, the state health department has no control of them either.
Yes, they would have control of them. Anytime you're preparing food, they would still have to get a health department certificate, but that's not, that's not included in what I was just describing here as not being considered a restaurant. They would still have to answer to the health department.
Okay.
Mr. Lawrence, can I move to?
That's it, thank you.
Your guys? Councilwoman Newman? Just a couple questions, and I'm gonna go to Councilman Tisdale. Tiny houses, I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this. One thought is, how is this different from a trailer park? How do trailer parks put multiple dwellings? And forgive my ignorance on this topic, but how do trailer parks put multiple units on one large swath of land?
Well, first of all, they'd have to have RMH zoning, which is residential manufactured home, in order to move a mobile home or manufactured home into the place. These are all stick-built, construction-built to withstand the wind requirements. We're in the velocity zone, and they'd have to meet the requirements of the building code for that. But these are one- and two-story homes that are gonna be built. If you've ever seen any of Elliot's projects and properties, their houses are beautiful. I mean, this is not gonna be some cheesy, you know, secondhand development we're talking about here.
Right, I just wanted to know the difference in how they're, how they would be operated. Again, from my own personal knowledge, do we require RMH developments to parcel out their lots? Or is that just because it's RMH, they get to break it up however they want to?
No, they're, they're addressed differently in the code. You can have one large piece of property, they're not, not required to be subdivided, it can be one large piece of property. But the LDO is very specific about how much room you have to have per mobile home space within the mobile home park.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, CB zoning. Can you give me an example of some areas that are CB zoning? From what I believe CB zoning to be, I don't wanna be in a position where setting up soup kitchens and social services to draw these, I don't know what you, what the socially acceptable term for homeless people are, vagrants, vagabonds, I don't have a clue. But I don't wanna draw them into the areas that are commercially developed.
Well, CB zoning is our tourism hospitality zoning, and we do have a lot of that along, along Highway ninety. But the reason we put it in there is a conditional use is because we have it in other places too. And that's so that the planning commission and the city council can decide which locations are appropriate and which are inappropriate. And y'all can consider all of them based on the nine criteria for conditional use, and if you don't feel that it's an appropriate location, you can turn it down.
Thank you. I'm gonna reserve any other comments, Councilman Tisdale?
Jerry, you mentioned something when, when you first started speaking. I just, I caught it, and I think you mentioned that there was a shortage of long-term rental properties.
Yes, sir.
That's all. I just wanna be sure everybody heard that, there's a shortage of long-term rental properties.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Councilman Glavine?
Yeah, so Director, as you have it proposed now, and you've stated it a couple of times, you have it in CB and RB as conditional use.
Correct.
Then you have use by right in industrial. They find an industrial area that they could put this in, use by right.
That's correct.
And you've stated CB is mainly your tourism districts and everything. Why don't we, again, crawl before we walk? I have no problem with the RB and the industrial, but I would probably like to remove it from CB, and then at some later time, if we need to add it back, because there's a need for more diversity, you know, in the tourism-sensitive districts, perhaps we add it back if there's a need. But I don't know if there's been a case made that there's a need for this necessarily as conditional use in CB. There's still an option in RB, there's still a use by right in industrial, and that's something I would like maybe the council consider.
What we do, and what we do sometimes in these cases, is we will over-advertise, in other words, we will advertise another zoning outside, maybe outside the scope, because we know that the council has a right to remove it from there. But if for whatever reason, y'all came back to me and said, well, why didn't you consider CB, we would have to go back and re-advertise with CB to include it. So that's one of the reasons that you sometimes see other zonings included in with this package. Sure.
So Councilman Glavine, if you're willing to make a motion to remove it from CB, I support that, and the reason is, when we saw this in Airbnb's and other things, if we open that door, we leave it open to court's interpretation. If we shut that door, it is what it is until we decide to open that door. And so it would be my position to support you if you made a motion to remove, to amend this and remove CB as a conditional use.
I'll propose at the, you know, when the discussion is concluded, an amendment that we removes the designation of conditional use in CB, and just keep the designations of RB and industrial as proposed in this, this document.
Any other discussion?
I'll second that, wait.
Do you make that motion?
I do.
Councilman Glavine moves to amend the ordinance to reflect the removal of soup kitchens, social services, words are hard today, soup kitchens and social services from CB zoning as a conditional use. I have a second by Councilman Lawrence. Is there any discussion on the amendment? There being none, I'll call for the question on the amendment. So this is the vote to support the amendment for removing CB as a conditional use. On the favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Those against? It passes five to one. Nathan Barrett's out, and Tisdale's against.
Now, we need, yeah, you got it.
The vote on the ordinance as amended?
Can I say something before we get to that?
Councilman Lawrence?
Why did you pick industrial as permitted use?
Well, like I said, you can't, you can't zone out, you can't even zone out adult entertainment. You have to provide a zoning for uses that are common to all cities. And so industrial, you know, is sometimes in a remote area, or there are uses in there that are a lot worse than soup kitchens in an industrial zone, you know, that require distance, which we're gonna get to in the next case. But it has to be allowed as a use by right somewhere, and that seemed to be the most appropriate to allow it.
Well, in downtown, we have industrial on Lemieux Street, don't we? Right there by the railroad track where a box building used to-
We do have some, we do have some industrial, and in the, in the next case that we're gonna talk about, we're making an argument about changing some industrial to downtown zoning, and I'll give you all the reasons when we get to that case.
And the other question I have is, why you have these two things together? We're dealing with a soup kitchen, so the tiny houses and all this trailer stuff, why these together in one resolution?
Whenever we, what we try to do is to include as many things as we can when they become an issue. This is, this multifamily- they become an issue. This is, this multifamily is something that has just come up where it's very popular right now, where, where instead of coming in and doing a single-family subdivision where they can sell off the lots, they want to actually build a rental community. And, uh, and we didn't have a definition that addressed that part of multifamily in the ordinance. But, you know, if we, if we came up here with an individual item on every change that we tried to make, you know, we'd be here until 10 o'clock tonight.
Yeah, but I mean, I just, I don't think, I mean, you keep saying it's very popular. I've, I've never heard of tiny houses until you come up with tiny houses, or whatever you wanna call them. I've never heard of that.
I didn't bring up the issue of tiny houses. Someone else brought that issue up about tiny houses. We're talking about multifamily structures. So I, I, we're, we're stuck on tiny homes, and I didn't bring that up. It just came up from someone else.
Tiny homes.
So it's not, that's not part of this ordinance. We can discuss that at another time. We did talk about it because we were confused about how this ordinance would relate to tiny homes, and it doesn't really relate to tiny homes as much as it does these other things that are in the ordinance. So if we could call for the question at, um, on the ordinance as amended, please signal with the raise of your hand in support of the ordinance. Those against? The passes five, one. George Lawrence is in opposition, and again, Nathan Barrett is not present. If we would move to item four C?
Ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances pertaining to garbage collection and disposal fees.
This was originally moved by Councilman Tisdale, seconded by George Lawrence. I'll open the floor to Councilman Tisdale.
Yeah, this is a pass-through cost. Um, folks have wondered why the increase is so great. I would remind everybody that the garbage contract that we had previously, which ends this year.
Nathan is, is still out of the room.
Does he need to be in the room? I thought he left. I thought he was like Elvis and left the building. Is he still here in a closet somewhere? Okay, um, I don't.
Nathan has left for the evening. I keep, I keep noting that, just so the clerk keeps it in the record.
Thank you. Uh, excuse me, but the point I was trying to make is that these contracts are what? How long are these, uh, HCUA contracts? They're for four years or six years? So we're in the, currently in the last year of the previous contract, so that means it was bid a number of years ago. So now we're in a new contractual year, fixing to start October 1st. That's why the rate has increased, uh, so much. It's not just an annual increase, it's one old contract expired, this new contract takes effect. Um, it, it's a pass-through cost. So basically, it's, uh, going up to 23.75 from 17 dollars. And, uh, the users, uh, the residential homeowners are the ones that use that service, so.
Can I make one statement, Mr. Councilman? That includes the debris pickup also. So that, that's not only just garbage collection, but also the debris that's been talked about along the coast. But it's, we've been, uh, at this point, was Pelican Waste that does that every Friday, Jersey and Woolmarket. So that, 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 that increase, that bump is inclusive of that contract also.
Right, and these, these, these new, the, the new contract will still deal with the same contractors that we have this year, correct? Pelican Waste and Waste Management. Waste Management.
And then, and then Pelican at this point, too.
Right, and service has been so much better than what it was previously, in my opinion. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Councilman Tisdale. Councilman Lawrence, the floor is yours in regards to the collection of disposal fees only.
You don't have a lot of choice. They charge other, and we have to charge, pass it on. I mean, that's, no, I don't wanna raise anything. Nobody does. But in this case, yes, you don't have a lot of choice not to adjust the price to be fair with everybody.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence. Councilman Guines? Councilman Newman, Councilwoman Newman? Councilman Glavine? And I have no comments. All in favor, signal the raise of your hand. Those opposed? Ordinance passes four to two. Councilman Glavine and Councilman Deming in opposition. Again, Nathan Barrett is not in the room.
It's a political vote.
Ms. Campbell, if you would. Item four D.
Ordinance for a zoning map amendment to authorize a change in zoning for 18 parcels of land from industrial to downtown.
This was originally moved by Councilman Guines, and seconded by Councilwoman Newman. Councilman Guines, I'll let you open the floor discussion.
Okay, this is mainly the property that's right across the railroad track there on Main Street, but it runs over to the other street to the west. Most of these properties are vacant. And the reason that we're proposing a change there is because industrial zoning, if someone came in and wanted to build something on these properties, they wouldn't even be able to meet the setback requirements because the lots are so small. Um, the ordinance says that industrial lots have to be at least 100 feet wide and 100 feet in depth. And almost none of these lots, other than the social building, you know, even comes close to meeting that requirement. Um, the gentleman who owns the small piece of property on the right-hand side where the railroad improvements were made, this rendered his property almost useless because if he were in industrial zoning, which is what he is, if he were to have to meet the setback requirements, he couldn't build anything there. So we essentially, what we did is we took these properties that were no longer being used for industrial uses, and are proposing to change those to downtown, which is the zoning that's on the south side of the railroad tracks. And that would give the people more flexibility to develop these properties. Now, we offered the owners the option of opting out, uh, when this went to the planning commission, and the owner of the Social Brothers building was the only one that opted out. And I actually met with that owner a couple of weeks ago, and he said that what he wants to do, he's using it right now for storage, he's renting it out to people to store things in there. But that when the next three to four years, he plans to do something with that, and then the downtown zoning would work for him when he gets ready to make that change. Um, we feel this is an appropriate request. You'll recall that, uh, a few years ago, the property up on Tommy Monroe was developed as the Blucks Commerce Park, and it was supposed to be industrial use. And there were no industries that located in there because the lots simply weren't big enough to build something of an industrial nature on that property. So ultimately, that zoning in there all got changed to RB, and it's become more of a professional, uh, type of development through there, you know, businesses and legal services and medical services, those kind of things. So this is the reason we're doing it now. There are some other properties on the north side of the railroad tracks where there is still a factory or something like that on the property. We're not recommending that we change any of those, as long as there's a use on the property, it can remain industrial.
So all the ones that are there will remain.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Hey, one question, Jerry, you changed it down.
Councilwoman Newman? Okay, Councilman Lawrence? Thank you.
Did the people that, you wanna change it to downtown, or they actually gonna do something with the downtown property?
They haven't come to us yet, probably because they know that their zoning is industrial, and nothing they can propose would, would meet the setback requirements on those properties. But they had the right to object at the planning commission meeting, and no one, like I say, no one objected, but the Social Brothers owner.
So you feel like turning the downtown is a better way to develop it?
I, I think it'll open the door for better development. You'll recall that this is what we did on West Howard Avenue. We had, uh, some, uh, businesses on there, existing buildings, and what we did was, uh, changed it to, well, y'all voted to change it to downtown zoning, and it's actually opened the door for a lot more development to go in there where they don't have to worry about setback requirements and other things, so.
Councilman Tisdale?
Nothing.
Councilman Glavine? I have no discussion. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Motion case unanimously. Again, Nathan Barrett is not present. This will bring us to what appears to be the most controversial issue of the night. Resolution E.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for a short-term rental located at 116 Acacia Avenue.
It's been moved by Councilman Lawrence. Do I have a second? Councilwoman Newman seconded it? It's a resolution to grant conditional approval. He moved it.
You're moving to deny it or grant?
Um, well, I'll move it to deny, correct. I'll be the reason why.
I'll second that.
It's on, it's seconded by Councilman Tisdale. It's on the table for discussion, Councilman Lawrence.
All right, the reason I did this, according to all these rules we've got to have now, we have to have reasons to deny it. The CENH on other non-conditional uses doesn't qualify for any of those. It's not compatible to the neighborhood. This is strictly homes, everybody deserves, and this is five houses in a row, and this house is the first one. So we got 116, 120, 124, 128, 130. They're all tied by the side. E, there's no way to have a buffer zone, because the houses sit on top of each other. So that's another reason to deny it. And yes, you put a hotel on the side of the house, a little room like that, it's gonna fix your taxes big time. So that's three right there. So we know not, it does not. Going back to what we did a year ago, uh, 120, put up for short-term rental, and we blowed it down, five to one. We're doing the same thing, 116 sits right on the side of 120. Has nothing to do with the beach at all. We're talking about the insides of the neighborhood, the oldest half of the neighborhood. So I recommend denying, and protect the people, that came spoke, that live there, the houses there, and that's something critically sound for the people.
Thank you.
Councilman Tisdale?
Yes, thank you. I don't believe the conditional, this conditional use is compatible with the character of surrounding properties and the use is permitted in the zoning districts of surrounding land. It's an interior lot facing Acacia Avenue. The surrounding properties are zoned RM30 with residential homes on the site. There are no short-term rentals currently permitted on Acacia. Thank you.
Councilman Guines?
Yeah, I haven't actually had a chance to go look at it. I would love to go get an opportunity to go look at it. Um, but as of right now, I've heard all voices. Thank you.
Councilwoman Newman?
So, the house on St. George was denied by the council and overturned in the courts, which in my opinion, that home was, um, ideal for short terminals, right off the beach, right behind another home that is already short terminal. And this home is closer to the beach than these two homes, and so I'm like, well, if the court's overturns one as well. Jerry?
Well, it would depend on the criteria. You know, one of the things that the court stated in the, in the ruling, as Mr. Burdro had said, it didn't state that he was for short-term rental or against short-term rental. He said that where the, the council failed was that they made the statement that it didn't meet the criteria, but they didn't give any specifics about which of the criteria that they didn't meet. Uh, an argument can be made that it's not compatible with the neighborhood, but, you know, we've talked about it.
But then it would be if the judge overturned it, now he's operating as a short-term rental, both of them, that opens the door.
He has a license now, yeah. The, the difference between that property and this property is that this property is one lot off of Highway 90. You know, we've talked about what is actually a neighborhood.
If he bought that lot that's closer to the beach, would everyone be okay with that?
Well, I mean, that's an option. He could, he could collapse the law line, and then he would be, he would have a, could have a Highway 90 address. But, you know, there, there are differences in neighborhoods. And, uh, you know, you've got, you've got places like River Plate where you have, uh, a residential neighborhood, there's one way in and one way out, and there's no commercial, any activity anywhere around it, you know, no real traffic. It's, the traffic's generated by the residents that live there. But we've talked about this a good bit. I live on St. Peter. St. Peter and St. John and the streets are not streets where you have one way in and one way out. We essentially live on cut-through roads between Irish Hill and Beach Boulevard. And we're constantly getting traffic from school buses and everything else. And we know that, but we still choose to live there because we just accept it. That's the, the way that it is. That's what kinda distinguishes what we're calling a neighborhood here from, uh, a secluded neighborhood where I think somebody mentioned the fact that, you know, you're supposed to be insulated from these kind of things. Highway 90 is one of the busiest commercial corridors in South Mississippi. And, you know, you hear the traffic from Highway 90. It certainly, if you live one lot off of Highway 90, which is where Mr. Rodriguez lives right now, that he, he, I'm sure he took that into consideration when he built the house, and he was gonna have to deal with traffic and noise. And, you know, we've heard someone mention that we don't know who's walking up and down, uh, Acacia. You don't know who's walking up and down Highway 90 either. Um, the, um, we, we hear, well, it doesn't meet the nine criteria, you know, it's, it's going to generate noise, it's going to generate traffic. Well, how do you know that? You haven't even approved the application yet. So some of these conditions that are in here, the nine criteria, you won't even know if this particular property has a problem unless it's approved. And then if you do have problems with it, it's conditional use, you can always take it out. But we run into this every time we have a, a short-term rental application in RM20 or RM30 zoning. And so we've suggested a couple of times, maybe three times, if this is gonna be the case, why don't y'all just remove it from RM20 or RM30 zoning, and we won't have to worry about this anymore. But every time it's come before the council for consideration, it's been turned down. And so it still remains in conditional use in RM20 and RM30. And as long as that's allowed in the LDO, when someone makes an application, we're gonna have to continue to bring it before the city council, so.
Councilman Tisdale?
You have other words?
Councilman Glavine?
All right, there, there are three criteria when these come before the council that I look at. Uh, one is, how is, uh, the, uh, area surrounding, uh, this particular place? Are there any other short-term rentals that are predominantly in the area? And even though there, there could be some nearby, I don't think I, I would label it predominant. The, the second thing that I'll look at is the councilman or councilperson that's, uh, over this area, that's a voice for the people, what does he or she, uh, think about it? And then the third thing that carries the most weight is you out in the audience. You know, we knocked on your doors, we told you we would be your voice, and we would represent you in these matters. And I think there's a significant number of res, concerned residents about their enjoyment of their investment in their home that they reside in. And so I'll support, uh, Councilman Lawrence's, uh, motion to deny.
Peter, um, correct me, I didn't wanna overstep on Councilman Lawrence's position. However, this is a resolution, it's a resolution to grant. It's not like an ordinance has, has options in it. If I'm correct, we put this on the table and we vote on it as it's presented? And so Councilman Lawrence voted to put it on the table, Councilman Tisdale seconded that. So what's on the table is a motion to grant this. So when you vote, if you vote, if you want to vote to deny it, then you vote in opposition of it. But what's on the table is a resolution to grant short-term rentals. Am I correct?
I think he may have misspoke, 'cause I think he, I think he clarified that, that it was a motion to deny.
He, he's making a motion, so he's moving to deny the resolution, but the resolution doesn't have an option. What I'm saying is it's not an ordinance, you don't pick one or two or three ways. You don't pick those. It's just a motion.
It could be up or down whether, whether or not.
I don't find it in here. So I'm looking, I read the entire resolution, and I don't see the language in there. Regardless, I'll move forward as a motion to deny, and I'll vote accordingly. So let me just make my peace, since everybody's had their moments to speak. Um, one, I, what perplexes me What perplexes me about this is, is not just the, the aforementioned case that was, that was addressed by the court, but it, it's also the fact that it's one lot away from the beach, and could he, should he have or would he have connected those two properties, this wouldn't be an issue, we wouldn't be discussing this. Um, it is RM thirty, I, it's a direct view to the ocean, I don't know who owns that one parcel in front of him, but she's right, if somebody opened up that short-term rental right there, then he would be in the same position as the previous court, which even though the court made its opinion based off of a failure to, to enter a condition, I still think it sets a precedent. Um, there is easy ingress and egress out of it, it's not set next to... I, I just, I'm sorry, I lost four words, I prepared to speak about this, but I don't think that, I think the amount of parking is available. Um, I think that C on these, these, uh, conditions, I think C works because of what's going on in the area. E, um, the screen, the buffer otherwise minimizes versus visual impacts, I don't think that that was intended to be directed towards short-term rentals because it'd be impossible to implement. Um, I have to support it as I would of any other short-term rental in, in a like-kind or quality position, and I think he's right that, that our duty is to, to represent the people that we elected us. Um, there's also one caveat to that, when I knocked on every door that I knocked on, the one thing they said to do was do the right thing. And sometimes that's not going to be the most popular position, and it's not, clearly not going to be in this room tonight. But I'm going to have to support the short-term rental and vote against your motion to deny. Is there any more discussion on this motion?
Yeah, I'd like to go back and straighten out the history about the thing. The first thing on Jeff Davis was Jeff Davis, and it was, the address was Jeff Davis, he changed the address. So that's why it was denied the first time.
Councilman Lawrence, you're not in the room.
That's when it's all due with the C, you know, these people that live here, they come here, you need to explain to them, they need to know the whole story. So he changes it, the beachfront is how Jeff Davis got passed as a beachfront beach property, it was not. This on Acacia is not beachfront property, it's not even closed, and the property on the beach is Acacia address, it's not beachfront property. So you gotta get all this stuff straight, don't make statements and saying things that is not true because that was Jeff Davis in Acacia.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence, for the clarification, I appreciate that. All in favor of the motion to deny? All against? The resolution fails four to two. Those in opposition of the motion to deny are Councilwoman Newman and Councilman Deming. Again, Nathan Barrett is not in the room. Now, bring us to Resolution F.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for short-term rental located at one ninety-seven Briarfield Avenue.
I'll make a motion to deny this conditional use.
I'm sorry, Dan.
So we have a motion by Councilman Tisdale to deny, and a motion seconded by Councilman Lawrence. Councilman Tisdale?
Yes, thank you. Oh, again, I don't believe this conditional use is compatible with the character of the surrounding property and the use is permitted in the zoning districts of the surrounding properties. There is one established short-term complex at the south end of Briarfield, and another similar complex under construction across from it. There are two to three short-term rentals south of Deming Place, but everything now north of Deming Place on Briarfield is residential. There's, uh, one, actually one small apartment complex and a seventy or eighty-room complex. All surrounding properties are single-family residential. So this is at the northwest corner of, uh, that subdivision. And I'm in opposition since all those properties around it, just, uh, regardless of the zoning, which is RM thirty, um, are all residential properties at that end of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
I, I stand with Paul. I take what he says.
Councilman Gines? Councilwoman Newman? Kenny Glavine is not in the room. Mr. Tisdale, you may, or, or Mr. Creel? I'm looking at the map, and I'm trying to mark off what he said, and I know we do have that complex, and there are few short-term rentals in the area. Can you tell me, or either of you tell me these numbers?
Yeah, that's, that's the property we're looking about, looking at. These are all. I don't know where's that. Here. So there's, uh, that's one short-term complex, and all of this is being developed, and also another short-term complex. You got a couple of houses in here that are short-term rentals.
So anything up here?
I think you, I think you, this one here is one, house in some of that, there's a, a short-term house, and a house up here is residential. See if it's here?
Mm-hmm.
Councilman Creo, uh, Councilman Creo, she's, Director Creel? This, can you tell me how, what the planning commission, how they, I did not read this one, because Acacia was the one that Freddie was talking about?
They voted, the planning commission voted tend to to approve this, and there was no one that spoke in opposition to this request. It, Councilman Tisdale's correct, this is at the very north end of Briarfield, and there are single-family houses on both sides of it. And Mr. Gorman, the applicant here, owns one of the houses to the east side of this particular house. But at the end of Briarfield, this also is the exit gate for the, um, Grandview Apartments, uh, over on the west side coming out. Uh, but since there was no opposition to it, I believe that played a major part in why it was approved. Uh, again, the property is on multifamily residential, so he has the right to apply for it.
And there's no one here that spoke against Briarfield. Councilman Glavine, you were out of the room, did you want to speak?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, a few words, uh, I, I know the, uh, councilman that's, uh, over this ward has, uh, made a motion to deny. Um, however, I haven't heard anybody in opposition. Uh, Paul, can you elaborate? Have you heard from some of the residents, or, you know, in this area?
Yeah, I've heard from the residents ever since this council approved a short-term complex of thirty-six units, and then this council approved another short-term rental complex that was originally forty-eight units and has been expanded, I think, to sixty units. And in addition to the, I want to say four, maybe five, short-term rentals in, um, single-family structures, uh, there are now in this neighborhood no more short-term rental units than there are single-family residential homes. So I would tell you that, that with all due respect, I've, I've heard plenty from the residents in, in this subdivision, I'm sure Mr. Creel has, uh, as well. So, I know.
Okay.
I know where they stand on that.
Yeah, again, I stated earlier that, you know, the councilman that represents this area, I listened to that. Uh, there are short-term rental units in and around this, this, uh, area. And then I, I'm just perplexed that I haven't heard an outcry from anyone, uh, that approached this council to ask for any kind of relief or for us not to support it. Uh, Director, have you heard from any opposition?
I haven't heard anything specifically about this piece of property, but yes, we did get an earful when the apartment complex was being converted down on the south end of Briarfield.
Okay. Thank you, I have no further comment.
Uh, Rob?
Councilman Lawrence?
Is this, uh, Paul, this is just one single family, right? This piece of property is just one home?
Yes.
Correct, it's a home.
That's correct.
Right. And is it, who lives outside, apartments on the side of it?
To the west, uh, to the west is an, immediately to the west is, um, another parcel.
That's correct.
I think it's zoned RM thirty, I can't recall.
It is.
Right there. I, I, I believe there's a structure there, but everything on the left side of Briarfield down to roughly Deming is all single-family residences. Even though it's zoned RM thirty, the history of this neighborhood, it was in the county originally, and when it was annexed, it's sort of like with all the zonings in that area, you've got four or five different zones because it was in the county at the time, it's a...
Well, the property right next door to, this piece of property we're talking about is zoned RM thirty, but the piece of property immediately to the east is zoned single-family, it's RS ten. And then a couple of lots over, you have the exit gate for the Coliseum that comes out into this neighborhood.
All of them are RS tens, there's just this one piece of RM thirty, and the little piece on the west side of the big one is all RM thirty. So you go this way, it's RS ten.
That's correct. That's correct, Mr. Lawrence.
But, I mean, man, I just, it was a single-family home, it's, it's not apartments, you know?
I'll call for the question. All in favor of Councilman Tisdale's motion to deny? All in favor of the motion to deny, please signal with the raise of your hand. Those against the motion to deny? The resolution fails for a lack of majority, so then it passes.
I was just, no.
Wait, the...
It just denies, you gotta go back and go down. As presented.
Okay, so we're gonna go back and vote and then on the resolution as presented, granting conditional use. Is there any discussion?
You don't, would you don't, excuse me?
So, it, it, there was, it didn't die, it just, your motion failed, so the original motion, the original resolution to grant needs to be, is back on the table, it needs to be addressed.
I, I have discussion, uh, Councilman.
Councilman Glavine?
Uh, uh, you know, as I look at the plat, and they've identified this property, you do have residential, uh, on both sides, and it looks like across the street as well. Uh, where is, I don't see any, uh, short-term rentals on this plat that's surrounding this piece of property, is that on the adjacent?
No, there's, there's not any short-term rentals this far north, this is at the very end of Briarfield, it loops around and then comes back into Briarfield.
I got you, I'm looking at it.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and that's why, you know, I think you can preserve the integrity of this by saying there is, it, it would stick out like a sore thumb as the only short-term rental on this, uh, plat that's in the documents that is presented us, so...
I'll, I'll, what, what did I vote? You, you vote, we're, 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 we're about to take a motion, I mean, we're about to take a vote to grant this, so if you don't want to vote to grant it, then you vote against it.
Vote against it.
Alright, so, is there any further discussion? We'll take a vote on the resolution as presented, granting additional use. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Those against?
Who motioned it? He's was denied.
I'll move, I'll move.
Third term's a charm.
There we go, I'll move to grant this conditional use application, it'll be seconded by Dixie Newman. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Those against? Motion fails. All against except for Newman and Deming, that were for granting the conditional use. Again, Nathan Barrett is not present.
Four opposed to the conditional use.
Four opposed, the resolution to grant approval.
No.
Did you get those? Glavine, Tisdale, Gines, and Lawrence?
And do we have to give a reason for the opposition, or has that been stated previously that could be in the record?
That's outside.
That's in the record by Paul's testimony.
I'd stated it early, if you need the language, Gary, I've got it.
And I think you just want to make sure.
Some reasons as well.
Alright, so, we'll move to Resolution G.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for short-term rental located at one-one-nine-zero Judge Sequel Avenue.
I move to deny.
I've got a motion to deny by Councilman Lawrence.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Tisdale. Councilman Lawrence, you have the floor.
This is on Judge Sequel, which is nothing but apartments, there's not a short-term rental anywhere around there. And I don't think we need to start that because it's not compatible to the neighborhood, these are all apartments. Apartments after apartments after apartment on Judge Sequel. There's no short-term, short-term rental close to there. So it's not compatible with the neighborhood. So that's the reason we have to list, and that's the reason I'll list, it's not compatible to the neighborhood, these are all long-term rental apartments.
Thank you, Councilman Lawrence, Councilman Tisdale?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Councilman Gines? Councilwoman Newman? Councilman Glavine?
Um, again, I concur with, uh, Councilman Lawrence, who's the councilman for this area. It appears there is no short-term rentals in and around, uh, the rest of the, the properties.
Uh, is that all your discussion?
That's it.
Thank you, I, if this is all rental properties, all apartment complexes, I don't know where is a better place? And if our, if our, if our barometer for approving a short-term rental is that there is none there, then there will never, ever be one anywhere. And while that may be the agenda, I don't agree with it, and I've got to support this, this is all rental property everywhere around this one. Um, I think you guys are wrong on this one.
This was a, this was a former barber shop that was converted, uh, he did spend a lot of money on it. And actually, when the video was shown at the planning commission, all the buildings around this one are vacant.
It, it's hard to vote against that. Um, there is a motion to deny on the table, all in favor of the motion to deny, please signal with the raise of your hand. All against the motion to deny? The motion carries, the resolution is denied. Those against are Newman and Deming. Again, Councilman Barrett is not present. Resolution H.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for short-term rental located at one forty Comfort Place.
I move that. Move it, leave it, and hide it, to approve it. And the reason I do that, because there's already ten or twelve rentals there.
Thank you.
Short-term rentals.
I've got.
We already moved in it, correct? Must be ten or twelve.
So this, this one meets all nine criteria.
I'll second it.
Hold on, I gotta get this on the table first.
I'll second it.
We got, uh, motion to approve the resolu, resolution granting additional use. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Tisdale. Councilman Lawrence, you moved this? The floor is yours.
I moved it because in that particular area, we constantly approve short-term rentals.
There's actually, there's actually one right next door, Mr. Lawrence, yeah.
Right, it was, used to be the old church, that duplex, the short-term rentals, they done one on Comfort Place, corner Comfort and Lee. There must be ten, twelve of them in that particular area, so that's the reason. Uh, Robert, that's the reason I, I approve them.
I wonder if you voted to.
Oh, you don't vote with it, Robin, I could, we go.
Councilman Tisdale?
Yeah, I, I recall, as, as Mr. Lawrence does, there, there are several short-term rentals in very close proximity, in fact, I believe on the same block.
Yes, sir, there is.
And, uh, I, I checked with the property owner next door, and there's no issue. So I'm good with that, thank you.
Councilman Gines? Councilwoman Newman? Councilman Glavine?
No comment.
All in favor of the motion to approve the resolution granting additional use approval, signal with the raise of your hand. All against? Motion carries unanimously, again, Barrett is not in the room. This will bring us to the consent agenda. Second. I've got a motion by Councilman Lawrence, second by Councilman Tisdale. Councilman Lawrence, I'm going to start with you, but only three items, you can't have all of them. Go ahead.
Alright, on, uh, C. Where, where did this even come from? This re-validation, this is the thing about underneath interstate. And we have a put this in motion from the, the city council?
Yes, it is.
C.
They're successful in getting this grant to rehab all that underneath interstate and, and to, uh, you've heard some, some long-range plans with lighting and, uh, surfaces and, and that sort of thing, so that's what that, if they're successful, we would, uh, be responsible for a mash, but they, you know, this is just allowing them to go get that grant.
So I imagine a hundred thousand, where does I match?
I just twenty percent.
It's twenty percent not to exceed a hundred thousand.
Twenty percent of what?
A five and a half million.
Twenty percent of whatever the grant amount is.
And this is strictly for the lighting?
And surfacing, and, you know, if we do, uh, some, you know, some parking and some other things that I need to, just to improve that whole section.
I mean, it's just a project that we put together through the council and the city. I know we talked about that, we went upstairs and had a meeting on it, but I never ever knew we passed. knew we passed, we just talked about this in the council.
This grant just became available and I think that was the reason why we put it on the agenda.
So you're going strictly after the money right now?
That's right.
And if we get the money, then we have to do the project. So we're, that, I, I think you need to explain what the.
Maybe.
We'll go after the money, but then we gotta fix, sit down, or we, what kind of project are you actually talking about? I knew we wanted to light it up, fix it up.
We had, you know, a design group come in, made a prep, and they made a pitch on some of the things, a whole long-term couple, could spend twenty million dollars on, on doing that thing from, uh, Kings Bayou all the way to Highway ninety, so that was part, you know, the, the thing that we enjoy every first, uh, Friday, you know, it would be improve that whole site, both sides of, of, uh, the, the overpass and Howard Avenue, Ha Hop.
Well, the city itself has a contract with MDOT, so what we have to do at MDOT to get approval.
Well, that's it, understand?
You know, 'cause, I mean, that's that property, not ours.
No, it, it, this is, this is a project that we have the right to use that underneath and we're gonna improve that so it can be more, you know, attractive.
So you don't need that permission, MDOT?
No, we got the permission in order to do, to do what we need to do, nothing permanent, just lighting and, uh, uh, cleaning, surfacing, I think, you know, those towers or those pilings, I guess I'm trying to say, that's pretty expensive to, you know, get a coating and, and do the things that they had talked about.
Councilman, one very important point is, it's Main Street that's going after the grant, not the city, and it's Main Street who would get the grant, and we would, that we would.
And provide, yeah.
Provide the twenty percent match.
Well, that was.
And it's Main Street that would administer the grant.
Alright, the Main Street don't have a contract with MDOT, we do. So they're gonna have to deal with us, they can't just do it.
That's right.
They can't do anything on the interstate without, you know, the city, the city has a contract with MDOT, not Main Street, that's just a group.
Brains.
I mean, that's all, if you're gonna work together, I'm just saying, everybody needs to explain that, the Main Street's trying to get this done, but they, they can't do it, I don't know. And that we need our help, y'all's help, I don't get that done. I know you put them under your thing in the mayor's former government, but it's still.
No, we understand that, I mean, we're like, Ellis is, is with the, you know, uh, with MDOT's approval.
Yeah. Okay. And the next one is J, is, uh, the B News, what are we doing here? We, I know we put, uh, forty-eight thousand there a while ago, helped, uh, B News, so what, what is J compared to the, the direct mail of the monthly newsletter, so what are we doing here?
We bid the, uh, this is the, to approve the bid, we bid the, um, printing out, printing and mailing out, there was only one bidder, Mel- Melee, out of Louisiana, that's been doing this work for us for the last couple of years. Um, the bid was based on a lighter paper, which will save us money compared to the current paper that, uh, things printed on.
Are we gonna, uh, we pursuing more advertisement for this thing? 'Cause this is a goldmine for advertising, and there's no reason, this ain't no need to be backed with all kind of advertisement. And the next one is, uh, West Library, the, the building that we doing the floor for fifty-nine thousand.
That's it.
And, in January, we passed fifteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars on the floor, so what happened to the first?
The sixteen thousand dollars was to remove the old tile, the old carpet.
Fifteen thousand.
This is, this is to install, this is to install the new carpet.
Scrape all of the remnants and that sort of thing, to get a prep for the new.
In the meantime, we also did a contract, which will be executed next week, to, uh, get rid of the asbestos that's in the floor.
So just sixty thousand just for the floor?
This is just for, that, this fifty-nine thousand is just for the installation of the new carpet.
Buying the new carpet and installing it.
Right. This is not counting the two-hundred thousand that's in the.
It's already been done.
Consent, but it's in the consent agenda here.
The two-hundred thousand number, as I recall, was kind of a roll-up of the air conditioning, plus the flooring, plus the asbestos, was all gonna end up being about two-hundred thousand.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Uh, the next one, Peter, on, uh, N. The, the block of Main Street, what we doing? Is this a twenty-five thousand dollar grant, or is this some time change, what is that?
This was the, uh, the old Everybody Cleaners property, and they, we had given them a grant, and then they, uh, they've elected not to pursue the grant program, so it's basically just sending, just undoing that grant, undoing the agreement, they had not received any money yet.
Alright.
They're in the process of doing a lot more renovations than they thought, and, uh, so we're just rescinding the old resolution.
And who was the company, they supposed to live in there?
Correct.
They be, they supposed to return that into a home? So it's gonna be two stories, one story? Or what the problem they having, or they're not, they're not gonna do that at all?
Well, they applied for it, they were granted it, and then they decided they didn't want it, so it's their property, is, um.
I understand that, I said, but are they still trying to build a home there? That's all I was asking.
They're still renovating it, uh, yeah, they're, it's gonna be inhabited by somebody.
And, uh, the next one, oh, the, the grant for Coon Street, uh, the Department of, what are we doing here with this?
Which item is that?
O. That's, uh, O. O.
Oscar. Oscar.
And.
That's the cover, so the.
Alright. And now we got, I thought we just did it, V?
Victory.
V like in Victor?
V is in Victor?
What are we doing him again?
V is in Victor, is that Mr. Patalo?
Yeah.
Extending his hours.
His hours, uh, have, and, um, services to the department, the engineering department are gonna be extended into the next year, he will continue to support the, uh, the Development Review Commission Committee.
We don't have enough, uh, engineers down, we have.
Well, and those services are valuable, I think, under the direction of, of the Director of Engineering, right, as needed.
We did have two consultant engineers, one has been let go, so this is the.
Again.
We did have two engineers on, on consulting basis during the last year, and one has been let go now, so now Mr. Patalo's the only one that's left.
And, uh, the CC on the Keesley Gate, what are we doing there? I thought we was finished with the Keesley Gate. Keep you busy there.
didn't ever come to us, actually, just, it was just a reimbursable grant.
And, uh, on Z, West Biloxi, the library, again, you got your private submission fund, what are we doing here? You, you, is that paying for the, all the work we're doing on the West Library? What, what is the?
Right, that's just moving, that's mov- moving money from, uh, Public Works budget into, uh, a budget for the library only, so as, as we've described, described to you earlier in some previous meetings, we've, just like we've done with the museums, we, uh, we've set up an account to, to, uh, track money that's, uh, fun, funds that are spent on the library, so we'll know this time next year, huh, just what it's costing, we, we don't know that now because it's been scattered all through, uh, Public Works and Rec Services and everybody else's budget, we've never done that before, we're doing that now with the museums, we're doing it now with the library, so we'll be able to document that a year from now.
Well, do we have a contract with, uh, have a written contract?
With who?
With the library.
You mean with the library?
Yeah, we got a contract there, but do we have a written contract? I'd like to see that, I'd like to see the one with the CTA, too, if we have a contract with them.
What we have with the, uh, with the library is a, is a, as you know, it's the, um, county library system, so we have an agreement with the county and all the other, actually, Peter can explain this better than me, but all the other, um, participants in the Harrison County Library Group. So, so that's the agreement.
There's an agreement.
There is an agreement, it's been in place for more than a decade.
Okay, but then we need an audit, we need a report, I mean, if you give them seven hundred and eighty thousand, I mean, somebody needs to be accountable for the money, and I mean, that's our job up here, to make sure it's accountable, and have a contract, if you don't get anything back from them, that's not doing us any good.
I'll, I'll get you a summary of, uh, it's an old agreement, and it's got different triggers and things, but I'll get you all a summary of the, I'll get you a copy of the agreement and a summary of what's required to be done, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it was put together in the seventies or eighties and, you know, it's like a lot of these things, the county gets to pick all the people and picks all the trustees and, but it talks about their, they survive through the city on annual appropriations, we could give millage or we could do annual appropriations at the discretion of the council, which is what's been happening.
Yeah.
Two-hundred thousand sounds like a lot of money, but that's really a result of us not doing anything to that building for a decade.
That's our building, we're protecting that building, I mean, that's, that's all in, maintenance that needs to be done.
Does this include the insurance cost on all the buildings or not?
Well, our, our building's, it's insured.
We don't break out, we don't break out insurance by, by building.
Don't break out the insurance.
It's real, uh, it's real maintenance that was done, roof and, and air conditioning and the other things that are being done.
That's it, Robert, thank you.
Councilman Gines?
I think the only two you missed was T and you. But I understand them, so I'll, I'll pass, so I'm good.
Councilwoman Newman? Councilman Tisdale?
Yes. I have a question about the insurance there on item number D, the MetLife Insurance. I, I'm, I see the ra- I see the rates there, I'm assuming there's an increase over the previous rate, but there may not be, a head shake will be fine, is there an increase? Do we know about how much it is?
Eleven percent.
Eleven percent, thank you. The only, the only other item I have is item T. This is the, uh, East Biloxi Recreational Facility, I'm only asking because I, I know this has been, this has been a topic recently, but I'm, I wanna be sure I understand. Th- this is a building that's going to be a gymnasium, I've heard it referred to as facility, a gym, uh, a community center, and, and.
Oh, I'm thirteen.
So i- if it's, is it a steel building, I assume?
Correct.
Okay, and wh- what's, what's gonna be inside?
It's a basketball court and a weight room, and it's got a little small, little meeting room in it.
Meeting room, and I would assume probably an office for somebody from Parks and Recreation.
Yes, in an office for somebody to work out.
But it's pretty much gym space, weightlifting space.
Correct.
A small conference room, okay, and we haven't determined anything other than at this point, um, we've got somebody to design the building, right, in a professional services agreement, do we?
Yes.
Do we know how much this is gonna cost, is there an estimate on the total cost?
Right now, it's looking at about three million dollars, it's still very preliminary design, we've got thirty percent.
Okay.
Two-point-five, the mayor says.
It's, it's an estimate, we don't know, 'cause, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, and we're looking at a timeline?
Um, the plans should be done by late fall, probably, probably for sure by the end of the year, I don't know about the funding.
Okay. Alright, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Councilman Glavin?
I, I don't have anything.
I have nothing as well, there being no further discussion regarding the consent agenda, all in favor, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously, or there, excuse me, maybe not unanimously, is there anybody in opposition to any of the agenda items on the consent agenda?
I have, I have V.
Pardon me?
V, Victor.
Victor? We have Councilman Lawrence in opposition to Victor, otherwise, the consent agenda carries unanimously. Again, Nathan Barrett is not present, this will bring us to the next section of our council Code enforcement hearings, Director Creo?
Item A, Robert J. Von Homme, twenty forty-two Crane Ridge, this case has been resolved. Item B, Richard Dowling, one-three-two-seven-two Old Highway Sixty-seven, this property's still in violation.
Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of Richard Dowling or one-three-two-seven-two Old Highway Sixty-seven? There being none, this hearing is closed.
Item C, Janet Eilerman and Terry Toller, two forty-six Nixon Street, that case has been resolved. Item D, Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation, Inc., twenty-four seventy Carter Road, that case has been resolved. Item E, Gulfco of Mississippi LLC, DBA Tower Loan, two twenty-four Bowen Street, that case has been resolved. Item F, Stone Investment Company Incorporated, zero room sign, that case has been resolved. Item G, Stone Investment Company, Inc., zero room sign, that case has been resolved. Item H, James R. Stringer, eighty-one sixty-two Jack Graves Road, I would ask for sixty days on that, I met with the owner, they'd actually paid a contractor to do the work, and it's just a matter of it, it get to the contractor on his list.
Do I have a motion?
I move sixty days.
Okay.
I've got a motion for sixty days by Councilman Lawrence, is there a second?
I'll.
I have a second by Councilwoman Newman, any discussion? All in favor of the extension for sixty days, signal with the raise of your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Item I, Michael Clark Hester, forty-five ninety-two Old Bay Road, that property's still in violation.
Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of Michael Clark Hester or two-five-nine-two Old Bay Road? There being none, this hearing is closed.
Item J, Helen J. H. Mikovich, one-one-four-one-five Quint Place, this property's still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of Helen J. H. Mikovich or one-one-four-one-five Quint Place?
I, I just have a question, Director, has anything been done or attempted since they were here?
No, it's still in the same condition it was in the last time we came.
Alright, thank you.
Okay. Item K?
What?
I'm sorry.
You gotta close it.
Right. Is there any other discussion? You wanna make a motion of any kind?
Would you be okay with a thirty day, so I can talk to them, they were here and I thought they were gonna make an attempt?
Yeah, we're, we're.
I'd like to grant, uh, thirty days.
We have a motion for an extension of thirty days by Councilman Glavin, a second?
I'll second it.
By Paul Tisdale, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Annie S. Mabour and Lena Palmer, Zero Keller Avenue, this property's still in violation.
Is there anybody here to speak on behalf of Annie S. Mabour and Lena Palmer or Zero Keller Avenue? There being none, this hearing is closed. This will bring us to the final section of our council agenda, section seven, routine agenda, do I have a motion?
I move it.
Second.
I have a, a motion by Councilman Lawrence and a second by Councilman Tisdale. Councilman Lawrence, discussion?
Uh, Walter? Give us a later scoop, uh, good news, bad news, whatever, give us something good. Pass your bid time, I know.
Good evening, council. Uh, a few more, about another hour, hopefully we'll all be at home, um, right now, we don't have any funding in the Mississippi PA website, but at our last conference call with MEMA, there's nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars that they're working on. there's nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars that they're working on.
That's what, nine twelve?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion in council? All in favor of the routine agenda, signal with the raise of your hand? Motion carries unanimously, and I believe we have a motion to adjourn, a unanimous motion to adjourn in the name of Dr. Charles Sullivan.
Dr. Charles Sullivan, I'd like to add, uh, Jimmy Buffett. I, I know his family and I can, uh, get the documents, uh, to his family. Close in memory of him as well.
So, we'll close in the memory, I need a motion to adjourn in the memory of Dr. Charles Sullivan and Jimmy Buffett.
So, move.
Our motion by Kenny Glavine. Seconded by everyone on the council. All in favor, signal with the raise of your hand? Motion carries more than unanimously, we are adjourned.
Good job, bro.
Thank you.